This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Tenino City Council work session. We're just gonna get started and hand things over to Aslan and he'll be, he'll be the presenter for the majority of the work session. Go ahead, Aslan.
All right. Hello, everybody. Okay, I see John is there. Hello, Mr. Callahan.
How you doing?
I am pretty good. Good to see you. Jason is there. I see Rachel there by name. I have not even met Scott yet. Linda, Rachel's in two places. Duncan Green. So anyways, my name is Aslan Need. I am with the Thurston Economic Development Council. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Southwest Washington Agricultural Business and Innovation Park, both as an update, but we also want to bring a kind of rather bigger piece of information to you tonight. It is just advisory tonight. It is just information sharing with you tonight. So we want to share as much information as we can, answer your questions, and then have you think about a big piece that we have never brought to you before. So that's really what tonight is about. So my colleague David Farrell has joined us from the EDC. He is the new EDC's Regional Agriculture Development Manager. I think he has been on these meetings before, but we will have David speak a few times tonight likely. We will also have a gentleman named Darren Johnson join us in a few minutes. He is a twenty-plus-year CPA and commercial banker, and we want to have him available to answer questions as we go through some of this presentation. So that's coming up. I just want to say that, you know, it's been a long road to get to where we are at now. It was almost, you know, this time, five years ago that I went out to the Barnett property, I had been made a presenter. Okay, awesome. So we went out to the Barnett property with, with, with Mayor Wayne, with Will Rutherford, with, I think David Waterston was with us and some others. John, you were not there, right? Did you, we went out, okay, so we went out. And that was really the first time, you know, I think it was Will who said to me, you know, you know, this had been the traditional historic county fairgrounds. Could you imagine this property as an ag industrial center? And that was really the, the first spark, and that was a conversation, I guess, the city council had had, or members of the city council had had for a couple of years back, maybe since that property of West Tenino was first considered as being brought into the city. And, and so anyways, I just want to acknowledge that we have been on a long road since then. We have had moments where it has been like miraculous, where, you know, we score the giant touchdown, we get, you know, millions of dollars out of the state legislature, partners come to the table, things move forward, and we've had months where it's like banging your head against a brick wall. And you just like, when is this project gonna start moving again where you feel stuck in the mud, right? And it's, it's been a five-year journey. I want to say that, in all honesty and authenticity, I feel like we are at the strongest position and place we've ever been at. We have the ducks in a row. We have been on learning curves. All of us, you know, many of us in the leadership positions of this project have not done a project like this before and have had to bring in, you know, we relied heavily on EDC board members. We, you know, we've had, we have property lawyers on the board, we have engineers on the board, we have real, commercial real estate managers and commercial bankers on the board. And, you know, we've reached out to the community in so many different ways when we hit a, a place where we're, we're just, we don't know enough. We get educated, we bring in experts, they help us along the path. At this point, when you, you're gonna get to see the first designs of the first building from Kaufman Construction, as well as the first budget for that building, we have a budget for site development from SCJ Alliance. We have finally, which has been a game changer, just in the last, I'd say, month, and then really in the last couple of weeks, like the quality of tenants that we can literally bank on, like, like when, when I'm allowed to actually bring you the names of the tenants we are now getting into serious discussions with, I think it's gonna make you all really happy. And I'm hoping that, I don't know if you have another meeting in two weeks, that we might be able to have an agreement with some of these, with some of these tenants that we can actually share their names and maybe even have them on to talk to you. So, so having tenants, the quality of tenants has just continued to, to increase. At this point, we feel really confident we can have tenants for that first building, and we feel like there's enough tenants that, you know, if we're successful on that first building, we can get a second building up. And so, so we really feel good with where we're at right now. All that said, we have a funding gap. We have not been able to fill. The bill, I will show you the actual performers in a, in a minute, but the building is coming in around a million bucks, and the site development is coming in like around one point two, one point three million, depending on how you look at it with the building and the taxes and how you add it all together. But we are looking at probably a two-point-four million-dollar price tag, and we only have one point four or one point five from the state to do this next phase. So we are about a million dollars short on the project, and we have beat the bush everywhere under the sun. You can imagine we have looked for more granting funding, funding that is just straight up, they give it to you, right? And at this point, we will continue to beat the bush, we will continue to look for more granting funding, but with tenants that are, are good rent-paying tenants who are close to be able to sign rental agreements, for the first time, we consider financing. So we could literally, we, we feel, and when Darren joins us, he can describe this in more detail, but we feel that with more than two-thirds of, of the, the funding basically for the park already raised with the initial funding that we got through the, utility extension and the master planning, and the project has raised over two-point-four million dollars so far. We feel that with the, the matching money we have with the possibility of land as, as an asset that, that we could bank on, that, and with tenants who could sign rental agreements that could say, I can pay this much back, that we could actually go after a loan and that we are really bankable, we'd be very interested, banks would be very interested in our project, and that the, the, the monetization rate of payback is, is, would, when we show you the numbers, we think that this is something that is not only doable, but is, is really exciting, like we could charge a rent that is significantly more than what we would have to pay back on the loan, and that not only would we be able to pay the, pay back the loan, but we feel that we, we could actually make a profit off the park. So, so that is the piece that is being brought to the council tonight for the first time that we've never talked about before. We are going to ask you to start to think about and consider the possibility of the city of Tenino taking out a loan for, for part of this first building project that, that we are, we are just basically waiting on this piece of money. Everything is ready to go. With that funding gap, if we could fill that funding gap with a loan, then we could literally tell tenants when that building could be up. And so that is what we are gonna have you look at tonight. I'm gonna show you, you know, all the pieces, actually the numbers and the look of the building. But I, I do wanna just pause for a moment and, and, and see your initial reaction, so. Okay, Wayne smiled, and so far, are people hearing me? Okay, John, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you, I think Darren Johnson has, is coming into the meeting, but I'm gonna show you some visuals as I share a screen here. And start your free trial today. That's not what I want. Where did my go-to meeting go to? So bear with me while I pull this up. Are you able to see my screen share?
Yes.
Okay, so these are the plans for the first building. They're not etched in stone yet, but this has been done by Kaufman Construction. We're really happy to be working with Kaufman, and they've been a great partner so far. So you can see, you know, it's basically just a giant, what they call a warm shell metal building. They have made some little effort to have it have some look or character that would have some rural qualities, the, the little copola on the top to make it look like a barn. We could do, you know, signage on that back part of the building that you see at the bottom, that, that could have the Ag Park signage on there or the businesses that are located there, as well as many other options. So just wanted you to see this. This is pretty hot off the press, just, just came out last month. And if I may, wow, all right. If you see this view of the drawing here, you can see that what we're looking for is a, a building that can be subdivided by the tenant needs. So each of these spaces would be two hundred and, two thousand five hundred square feet, and if a tenant needed five thousand square feet, it's got the, you know, the walls that can be removable or added as we go. And so like right now, the two top tenants we are speaking with, both are interested in about five thousand square feet, and so this could be one building that hosts two main tenants. To just keep going up here a little bit, this is the latest drawing of what the, the buildings could look like. If you look where my cursor is here, this is the wastewater treatment plant, all right? And so the fence line is coming down kind of right about into here, where the little woods are with the wastewater treatment plant. And so it's this first building closest to the road, closest to the wastewater treatment plant, where there is, if you've been out there lately, a rough-cut driveway in from when they put in the sewer and water extension. It is this property that we are looking to develop first with the parking area, stormwater drainage, all that, and this would be that first building. All right, so any questions on that piece? And I cannot see you right now, so if, if anyone has a question, please speak up.
Yes, deliveries. I'm not seeing any place that's real convenient for deliveries in here.
So right now, we would, you know, part of the site development would be that we'd put in an actual driveway that would come in. And then we, we have talked some with Miles Sand and Gravel that trucks could do some kind of U-turn using their road. They would prefer that if there was retail customers, but they would not use their road. Are you talking about like the, the back of the building with some kind of loading dock area, John?
Yes.
Okay, right now, with the plan that we asked Kaufman to create, and this is how, like, if you've been up to the warehouse district in Tumwater, where like Matchless Brewing is and Tart Cider and Eight Arms Bakery and stuff, this is how Kaufman has been doing these buildings, and that the, the front is actually has the big bay doors that can open up for deliveries. We had talked to them about the idea of having the back, but, you know, they basically convinced us that with, you know, with proper planning and, and even like marking out your parking spaces as loading dock areas, that this is actually a much cheaper, it makes better use of the amount of land we have, and that it, it works for most customers. So if we had, if we did attract a specific tenant that would require some specific back entry with a specific loading dock format, that they tell us that we could still add those in, say, like on the sides of the building, or that, you know, if we had that commitment from that tenant before we actually broke ground, that we could, you know, change the shape of the building. And so like this other model here has the first building sideways, so you literally could do that. And, and, you know, we could literally do it however we want. We could turn this around so the front faced towards the wastewater treatment plant and the back was the loading area. So we, we have options right now. Does that?
This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
I'm trying, but it's making me use a power breakout.
You should be able to just like reboot it.
Are you guys back on?
Yeah, I'm back on. Dave Farrell's back on. You're back on. We lost the... Okay, there's Darren. Okay, there's with us. All right, continue. All right, do we have, did we lost any city council members or everyone back now? Nope, everybody's back. Cutter's, Cutter's gone, but he's, he had his wisdoms. He's hanging on. Go ahead. All right, Darren, I'm gonna introduce you in just a minute here. So, um, so do I still, I still have the ability to share? That's not what we want to share, though. All right, so I'm just gonna show you this. We went, I hope I answered your questions, John. If you, you need to ask more, please do. This is the performer created by Kaufman. If you take a look at this, the building is coming in at just under a million bucks, plus the design puts it just over a million. The site, uh, site work budget from SCJ, I'm saying this number is a little high, and I can show you that on their actual estimate, why that's a little high. But even at that high number, I, I want to just take this down. There's your subtotal, here's your taxes. So even with what I'm saying is a, a number that's maybe a hundred to two-hundred thousand high, we are still at two point, under two-point-five. There are a couple of other costs in here, but even the highest number here is, is under two-point-five. And so I'm saying we have one-point-five, just south of one-point-five from the state capital budget. The Commerce gets to take a chunk of that, so we're just under one-point-five. And so we are just, just about a million dollars short. I'm saying we're slightly under, but for contingencies purposes, we're talking about a million dollars short. So just wanted you all to see that. I am going to continue to share our screen. This is the SCJ site budget. I just want you to get a sense of this. I, I can certainly share all this information so you all have it to look at. I can send it along as an email attachment, but you can see that, you know, it's all, all the different pieces, you know, unless we are construction experts and engineers, we may not understand all the saw cut and stripping and earthwork, but these are the actual things that need to be done on, on the site to make it ready. There are some kind of what we call the soft cost down at the bottom, this mobilization, construction, engineering, design, this development and management, project oversight numbers. Those are actually numbers that we have, they're, I don't want to say they're padding the budget, but some of it literally is padding the budget, like when we added this cost when we were submitting to the Transalter Corporation for the EDC to actually gather some money to be able to have project management and oversight. And so that's why I feel that we can really reduce that number to some degree. But for the most part, even at the highest number we saw on the other pro forma, it was, you know, one-point-two-seven million. And so again, at the highest point, we are looking at a two-point million, two-point-five million-dollar budget. And so the next piece, I just want to briefly show you and then have Darren come in. This is the, the monetization number on a million dollars. This is, Darren's just kind of best guess ballpark at this point of what the going rates are likely to be, likely in this three-point-five to four-point percent rate, if you actually got a loan right now on a million dollars, that he thinks it's most likely maybe this twenty-five-year rate. So basically, we're looking at like a five-thousand-plus payment back on the loan each month. And again, with the going rates that, you know, to our best, you know, calculations, David Farrell and I the other day, we're, we're figuring at ten-thousand square feet. You know, what is the, the cost at, say, six-thousand dollars? We're looking at sixty cents a square foot. There's nothing in Thurston County going for sixty cents per, per square foot. You know, we could double, triple, quadruple that and still be cheaper than any, any space available, largely because our, our building has been subsidized by, by the state government and the port and, and USDA to granting. So with that said, I, I can bring this back up if Darren wants it, but at the moment, I am going to stop sharing if I can figure out how to do that on go-to meeting. Any, any suggestions, Jen, where I know where that is on Zoom?
Yeah, just a second. Do you want, who do you want to make presenter now, David?
Um, I don't know. Darren's gonna talk. I, I just may have to bring this sheet back up if he wants it. Otherwise, I think we just want to see each other.
Okay, I'll just leave this page on for now then, if that's okay.
Okay, I would love for Darren to actually be seen by you all. So if I can just figure out how to stop sharing. Okay, but I can't. I, I just never use go-to meeting, so.
I, I can see him.
Okay, where? Oh, you can see him. Okay. Yeah, well then, I will, I will give you Darren Johnson of Iron Point County, and Darren, if you would introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you. And then we'll just make ourselves available for questions, and Wayne is waving.
Thank you.
God for driving by.
Okay.
So, yeah, just a little bit about myself, like kind of, you know, who is this guy here? My name is Darren Johnson. I'm a CPA. Iron Point County. It's just my own business. I, I do accounting consulting and taxes. But really what my background is this, is I've been a CPA for about twenty-three years, and I do a lot of different business. Prior to kind of going into this line of work of consulting, helping businesses was, I was also in the banking industry as a controller for regional banks. So originally I was with WBI and Bank. I lived up north, and about six years ago, WBI and Heritage Bank merged together. So I worked in the banking industry for about ten years, really kind of understanding, you know, how banks are making loans, what is needed usually for properties. Kind of how I got brought into this was David Farrell and I worked at the Washington Hospitality Association together. I worked there as a CFO for a while, just helping them get their processes in place. And then David, as he's joined the EDC, had some great questions, saying, well, here's a shortfall. I don't know anything about lending. What are some general things out there? So just as a friend and just as a professional, maybe a little bit more about my background, even though I'm accountant, I'm like the first generation non-farmer. My family's original farmers, dairy, wheat on my dad's side in the, in the Dakotas, but my mom's side, homesteaded down in Oregon along the coast. If you ever go to Costco and buy the big massive chunk of cheese that says Bannon Cheese, that's where we sent all our milk. So essentially, at sixteen, my parents kind of got out of the business simply because of interest rates were too high. So really kind of the ag has always been in my background too. And then just as David brought this up, I was like, well, is there any way I can help with just some knowledge about some basic that maybe what banks are looking for? So I met with Ashlyn here and David and just kind of talked about, well, what would a bank look at for a shortfall? If, if this is one of the options, maybe the city and EDC is looking at. So essentially brought some basic information together, kind of where their current interest rates are as well. Biggest thing is really interest rates are pretty low. That band between four percent, three and a half percent is reasonable. If anything, it's currently kind of high. And what I mean by that is I just helped another entity close on some property. They're finalizing out in Yelm, and final all-in cost for them is about two-seven-five. So just kind of walked through the mechanics of what that was, gave them some basic information so that they could present to you. One, if this is an option, kind of what would a payment look like? And then two, what are some things to explore potentially on this, and, and what would be the next step? So I just kind of threw out a lot there. Ashlyn, was that kind of what we, you want me to cover there and just kind of maybe open it up? Or is there specific questions since I joined a little later to be able to answer for everyone?
I, I would like to, you know, you only have, the council only has five minutes left in the work session, so I really just want the council to ask us questions right now. You know, what we are asking again is for the, the city to consider taking out a loan for the agricultural park project, and it is something we want you to start to think about. And we'd like to, the opportunity to come back in a couple of weeks and tell you more and learn more and hear where you're at. So initial questions.
Okay, Aslan, have you guys even tried to figure out what our credit rating is? Because that's gonna set what the interest rate's going to be. Also, it'll set how long we're able to put that type of a loan out. You have a couple of people that are actually looking, and then I'm just throwing these out there because we don't have a lot of time, that are looking to sign contracts. We're gonna need to know what kind of stability is going to be there, how much the rates are going to be charged. There's a whole lot of moving parts that are there in the time that we have, just cannot be touched before we can make it a, an informed decision. The reason I, I have a little bit of this is because I did this kind of stuff before financing. I hated every second of it, and I got out of it as soon as I could. But a lot of the stuff that was there, it's, it's still there, what needed to be looked for. So those are just a couple of things that off the top of my head that I'd like to know a lot more about before, you know, before we can really start moving forward with this.
Absolutely. And I know, you know, we know the city's had a couple of issues in the last year that could certainly affect your credit rating and things of that nature. And so, so all those things will be taken into consideration. They have to be as we go down this path. We do have some friendly bankers that we feel really confident about, both the City already banks with Timberland Bank, and we feel like we have a great relationship with them. The EDC on our board is Olympia Federal and Heritage, both local banks, who we feel are very, already aware of the project and very interested, and would be certainly ha- happy to sit down with us to answer questions like this. So we, so we do feel like we have some allies that we can just delve into and look into these things. It, you know, obviously, and there's no commitment being asked at this point. We just tonight wanted you to start thinking about it, so.
Yeah, as you can see, I'm thinking about it.
Always, John. I can always count on you. All right. Any other questions from any other council members?
Nobody else. I've got one more, this time putting on a different hat. You guys probably know, the council knows, I'm also with the fire, a fire commissioner. Has there been any discussion with the fire department as far as laying in fire hydrants and all that kind of good stuff, a lot of infrastructure?
Every discussion we try to have with the fire department, they're not willing to converse with us. They, they say that they don't have a fire marshal. They say that they don't, they haven't participated in any of our building planning or anything like that. So we, we really don't get much cooperation from them with the developments that we've had put in. We've had to seek advice from fire marshals in other communities to advise on things like hydrant distances and things like that. So we, we really don't get a lot of cooperation from across the street.
Okay.
That's Ben Barnes. We really tried to work with him, and the last, he, the, the last issue was with the, the, the tank, the gas station going in, and he was getting, it's, it's mostly Ben working, trying to work with him. But they, they don't have anybody that is a, a responsible party for fire codes.
Okay.
All right, I see, I, I know the time is up. Is there a plan to have a meeting in two weeks on the twenty-seventh at this point? You know, we'd love an opportunity to come back in two weeks if you have another meeting, so.
Okay.
All right, I, I, I think I have to get off of here so that you all can see.
You don't have to go anywhere if you don't want to. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this thus ends the work session. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Cutter, Councilmember Copeland, who had, he had a surgery, so he is, he is at home nursing himself. We have an agenda needing approval with the addition of, excuse Cutter Copeland, under, under consent calendar.
You can do the, actually first?
Oh, yeah. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Amen.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Now we have an agenda needing approval.
Move approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
We have a question. We have a second. All those, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the meeting minutes for the three-twenty-three meeting.
No approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar with, the consent calendar consisting of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one through April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Payroll EFTs and checks, numbers two-nine-seven-nine-one, in the amount of thirty thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and ten cents. Claims checks, two-nine-seven-nine-two through two-nine-eight-three-one, and EFTs in the amount of eighty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and one cent, for a grand total of one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and eleven cents, and excuse of council member Copeland.
And excuse of council member Copeland.
No approval.
Second.
So move the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to executive session. There is another link that was provided to all the council members. We'll be going to executive session. It should take no longer than 15 minutes. This is to discuss potential litigation. We'll be meeting with Ruiz and Smart attorneys and we will be back. No action will be taken in the executive session. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome back to the Tenino City Council meeting. Executive session is over. No action was taken during the executive session. Next on the agenda is presentations. I do not believe we have any scheduled this evening. Then public comments. If there is anyone in the public that would like to provide a public comment, please come forward and do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address. If there's anyone present that would like to provide a public comment, please do so now. Moving on, public hearing. We have none. Proclamations. Mr. Duncan Green proposes a proclamation in support of May 2021 as Bicycle Commuter Month. Do we have that proclamation? Can you pull that up, Jen, please?
Move approval. The yearly thing. First line, last line, please.
She's trying to find it.
Yeah, I know. You know how many years we've been doing this?
All of them.
I've lost count.
There we go. This is a proclamation for Bicycle Commuter Month, whereas bicycling is one of the most energy efficient forms of transportation ever invented and is a mode of transportation well suited to urban environments where trips are shortened length and overly congested roads are difficult and costly to expand. And the last line, please? Scroll down. Now therefore, we, the council and city of Tenino, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 2021 Bicycle Commuter Month. We have a motion to approve the proclamation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to old business, then new business. Review solid waste management plan. We have some guests with us. Are any of them from the solid waste advisory committee or?
We, so, good evening. My name's Karen Leece. I'm with Thurston County Public Works. I am the interim solid waste division manager. And so we work, working with the solid waste advisory committee. And then with me today, I also have Wendy Mifflin, who is with HDR. She's a senior planner with HDR and she has over 30, 30 years of solid waste experience. And she was the primary author and facilitated the process of putting together our solid waste management plan with the solid waste advisory committee.
Okay. Would you like to present the solid waste management plan?
We would, we would be happy to, depending on your time. We do have a presentation, but we weren't sure whether or not you'd like us to make a full presentation on it today, tonight or not.
Sure, you got a full 30 seconds.
No. If you have a three-minute elevator speech.
Very good. We'll give the three-minute elevator speech. Wendy, you and I can try and fill the details. So we're here today based on a letter from our county manager, Romero Chavez, that, which you have in your packet. The solid waste management plan that you have before you today. The last solid waste management plan was crafted in 2009. So as you can imagine, a lot of changes in our system have, and in the county, have ensued over the past 12 years. And so during the last year or so, the solid waste advisory committee updated the solid waste management plan. And the purpose is to manage solid waste in the county for the next to six to 20 year, 20 years. And it guides the actions of our county as well as the participating cities and the waste haulers in our county. This was very much a collaborative effort with the solid waste advisory committee. And at the, at the time, Dave Waterson was serving on the solid waste advisory committee and participated in the development of that. And now, of course, we are pleased to have Cutter Copeland participating in the solid waste advisory committee. The plan itself is reflective of the values and commitments of our county. And again, directs the waste and how it's handled. It is a requirement of state law that the RCW governs responsibility for managing solid waste in the cities and counties. And so I think we also provided a handout. It looks like you have the solid waste plan in front of you. There are multiple goals and recommendations that are part of this. I mean, again, we, the three-minute speech doesn't include all the goals and recommendations that 15-minute speech would. So, I mean, I want to open it up and have you, you know, give you the opportunity to ask questions. But I also wanted to touch on the flow control element of the presentation or what's before you today. I don't know, Mayor Fournier, if you've had any discussions or if the council's familiar at all with the flow control element. But I just wanted to touch on that as well. So as a part of this, so what we are asking today of the council is for the approval of an inter-local agreement with Thurston County for solid waste management and hazardous waste planning. And that includes the solid waste management plan, but there's also an element called flow control. And flow control is the legal basis for local government to designate the locations where municipal solid waste is taken for processing, treatment, and control. It ensures that waste generated in our county is handled responsibly and in accordance with our missions and visions and goals and sustainability outcomes. And it also provides the revenue stream to enable us to manage the disposal facilities and make, take care of all the education and outreach and monitor and compliance programs that are required by, by regulation. And so this is a little bit of a change to how flow control is currently managed. So right now, the mechanism for managing flow control in the county is through our transfer station development and service agreement with Republic Services, who's our contractor at the Waste and Recovery Center. And they have a subcontractor, Lemay, who is actually on the ground at the Waste and Recovery Center in Rainier Rochester Dropbox sites. And so under this agreement that we currently have with them, the, all the waste that municipal solid waste generated in the county and then in our participating cities as a part of their, our inter-local agreements, deliver their waste to our facilities. But something that is changing is that our transfer station development and service agreement is expiring in May of 2023. It is over 20 years old and so it doesn't meet our operational needs at this point. And so we've moved forward with a request for a proposal for a new contract to manage our transfer station operations and our disposal and maintenance needs. And we're expecting that contract to be in place for over four, 20 years as well. So to ensure a stable stream of municipal solid waste, for all the reasons I just outlined, to support our programs and responsibility, the county in December of 2020 enacted flow control. Because again, with the expiration of that contract, the flow control will no longer, under that contract, will no longer apply. Excuse me. So that flow control ordinance designates the county facilities as the exclusive disposal sites for MSW generated in our county. Excuse me. There are a few exemptions as a part of the flow control ordinance itself. It exempts recyclables and construction and demo waste that meet certain volume thresholds. And those can be taken directly to a permitted facility. And it also exempts residential self-haul customers from any enforcement actions. So if somebody wants to load the garbage up in their vehicle, they do not necess, they do not need to take it to our facilities. They could take it to Lewis County or Mason County or wherever they would like to take it. We are not enforcing it. What we are trying to ensure through the flow control ordinance is that commercial waste that's generated comes to our disposal facilities. Excuse me, I'm going to have to take a drink of water. So I just wanted to also just mention that flow control is not new. Snohomish, King, Pierce, Mason, Lewis, and Graves Harbor all have flow control ordinances in place. So we have provided the city of Tenino with a draft flow control ordinance. And that's a piece of the materials that are before you today, in addition to an inter-local agreement and a draft of potentially ordinance language that you would incorporate into your, your code. So with that, that was not three minutes. It was probably more like five or seven. But I tried to hurry. So if there are things that I miss, I may created more questions than answers, so.
Okay, thank you. So this is our presentation. The ILA will go to the attorney and the ILA will be brought to the next meeting for council to take action on. Does that sound okay, Karen?
That sounds great. Just want, yeah, if you have any questions for either Wendy or me, we'd happy, be happy to answer them. But hopefully the material's clear.
Absolutely. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Karen or Wendy? Mr. O'Callahan?
Where, where are we actually shipping all of our, all of our trash to nowadays?
Those to Roosevelt landfill, which is a Republic Services landfill down in Clickattack County.
And how much longer do they, do they have before they have no more room? Because last time I looked and it's been a while, there were only two spots in, in the state of Washington that could accept trash anymore.
Wendy, I'm going to have you help out here, but as far as I know, Roosevelt has capacity for a lot of years ahead of us, so.
So I believe Roosevelt just did a major expansion and they're looking at another one. And so right now, I believe they have over 30 years and possibly 50 years with their expansions available for municipal solid waste under their contracts.
Okay, in other words, I'll be dead, so I don't have to worry about that part too much.
We might all be.
The other thing that I, that I wonder about is you mentioned that people, if that haul their own stuff can go to Lewis County or some other county. The reason that they do that is because it costs a lot less. Why are our prices almost higher than everybody else's that would make people go other places?
Well, it's hard to say why the prices in Lewis County are what Lewis Counties are. I mean, we do, we do have a lot of, we are growing county and we have a lot of growth projections in front of us. I can't quite remember. It's about 30% growth by 2040, something in that range. And so we have a lot of infrastructure needs that we're going to need to continue to build out our infrastructure to meet those growing population needs. We are, we are looking at a new contract as well. And as a part of that, we will be looking at a price, the pricing structure that's a part of that. We have lots of education and outreach programs in our county to try and, you know, encourage recycling and reuse and sustainability outcomes. We also have a post-closure landfill here at the county that we are required, it was closed in 2000. And so we have a 30-year commitment or requirement to monitor and regulate the post-closure landfill as well. So, I mean, all of those, all of those factors contribute to the cost of managing solid waste in the county. We certainly are always looking at our costs and trying to make them as reasonable. And that is, again, kind of looping back to flow control. One of the main reasons that, what a significant reason why we enacted the flow control ordinance is because by the more waste that's generated and taken to our facilities, right? The, the lower the per-unit processing cost sort of is on that, right? I mean, the more money that we have coming in to support those programs, the lower the cost overall is going to be, so.
Will those, will those lower costs be reflected? Because that's, that's something, you know, it's, it's not a big subject that people are constantly talking about. But every now and then you'll hear somebody complaining about the cost of using Thurston County landfills. That, you know, that they'll go out to Lewis County because it costs so much more here. Not a little bit, but apparently by a lot.
Sure. Well, I mean, look, I can answer some of that.
So I believe there's about a $20 per ton difference. It's not for the self-haulers. It's what gets picked up at the curb. Basically, that's a little bit more expensive. And Lewis County is looking at tipping fee increases and implementing those as well. So, you know, that, that price difference is going to narrow, I think, significantly in the next couple of years.
I would just also add on, it's always who your neighbors are. So we hear the same thing from Pierce County residents that come down to Thurston County because our prices are less than Pierce County. So, you know, it's, it's very hard. It's always what your neighbors are doing and the size of the county next to you and what their costs are. So it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of just, you know, which side of the county you're on in this case in terms of the cost that you're next to.
And Pierce County's prices are about $30 a ton more than, than Thurston County's. So it's just kind of odd how that works.
Yeah, it seems like the bigger the area you are, the, the better chance you have of reducing the cost and it's not working out that way. Especially since we're all.
And some of it has to do with the cost of managing a closed landfill as well. So, you know, that, that goes to it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to keep moving. This will be on the agenda at the next meeting for council to take action on. This is your first touch. Thank you for the presentation, Karen and Wendy. I really appreciate you guys showing up and, and helping us out.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Bye-bye.
But next on the agenda, we have settlement agreement. So we have, Jen's going to pull it up for us? Maybe?
Well, we got it first for approval.
It's gone. That's the inter-local?
Rolled past it a bit ago. It was in there.
Was that Josh?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, well, council's been presented the settlement agreement. It's in the packet. Recommended action from the administration and based on, you know, attorney recommendations, we are asking if the council authorized the mayor to sign the settlement agreement and, and accept the settlement agreement.
Already moved approval.
Second.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? And I'll, I'll just read in the statement, the, the official city statement. The mayor and city council are pleased to announce that the city has reached an agreement with its insurers to resolve the city's claim for coverage for the city funds that were lost last year as the result of a criminal scheme to defraud the city in the early days of the coronavirus pandemic. Under the agreement, the city will receive full compensation for the lost funds. The city, including the mayor and the council members, will have no further comment on this agreed resolution. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Again, thank you, Josh, for all the hard work that you've done. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to reports. Chamber of Commerce. George, are you with us?
I'm here, man. Trying to get my screen to share for camera. The Chamber of Commerce, the next luncheon's going to be next Wednesday. The Chamber of Commerce, the next luncheon's going to be next Wednesday. It's a hybrid in person at Samsung Cafe and then also on Zoom. And then we're going to feature the Tenino organization to serve our community and make it a better place to live, work, play, do business, and visit.
Okay. Thank you, sir. EDC, we have attached a report from the Economic Development Council. The last EDC board meeting, there was a presentation on natural products and the EDC pushing to invigorate the natural products market in Thurston County. And, and we, we're really primed to be a, you know, be a home for that kind of thing. VCB. Fire Mr. Twelve. Go ahead.
Why not, on a experienced Olympian beyond, they're going to be hosting on April 22nd at 4:00 to 5:30 PM, the launch of the Thurston Bountiful Byway, kind of a tour that people can go on. They have about 50 people already signed up for it. They contact Jeff Boe. If you'd like to attend that, it's going to be virtual tour this year.
Okay. Thank you. It's excellent. Fire Mr. Twelve. Mr. O'Callaghan?
No report.
Yeah. So I, I did, as, you know, I did ask that you, if you would approach the commission about having a meeting with the city council. Is there, was, was, was that discussed?
Uh, because, because of the letter that you received, at this point, I cannot comment any further on that. We'll be receiving more.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to library. Linda?
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Just a very brief update. We are moving along in the remodeling and it's looking really good inside. There are still things to do, however. So we're, the date is slipping slightly. We will reopen for takeout on April 27th, which looks as one week later than we had planned.
We use Uber.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We use Uber for that takeout?
Well, you know, feel free. I'm sure they wouldn't mind doing it. Sadly, it's not very tasty. Yeah. So we'll start the library takeout again on the 27th and as soon as we can, we will open for expanded services. Kind of unclear on the timeline for that, but we hope within a week or two at this point. So when it's all said and done, I'll make sure you guys all know. And so you can come over and take a look and be impressed at how the inside of your library will look at that point.
Museum.
I have no report.
Tenino Community, what's that? Tenino Community Service Center. I'm hoping they would be present tonight. They are working on, there's a large grant they're going to be receiving. And I, I don't exactly remember from who, but it was to the tune of about $80,000. They'll be receiving a grant and they're going to be coming to the city and wanting to put in a backup power source at the food warehouse. The last power outage, the temperature dropped in the freezers and they, they were, there was a risk to lose a lot of food. So they're going to be wanting to put in a backup power source, which is excellent. Arch Commission. Mr. George?
We've received one, we've received one application from Robert McKenzie so far. And we have three others that say they're applying, but have not turned in their applications.
Thank you, sir. Civil Service Commission, Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee. Do you have a report from that, Linda?
The only, I think I reported last time about Chris Hallett buying the building between the Eagles and the landmark. And he submitted his application and it was approved. So whenever he gets started on that, but I've, and I've handed out applications to all the businesses in town. So we're just waiting.
Good job. Thank you. Planning Commission. Public Safety Committee, Chief of Police. I do not believe he is present. Director of Public Works is not present. The building official is on vacation. City Attorney, Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Garrison.
Yeah. So I'll just give you an update on where we at on our financial position. We've had for the first quarter revenues of, of about $725,000 rounded and expenses about $625,000. So we're in good shape. The caution I give you is the general fund is right on budget. So there's nothing in general fund to spend. The extra $100,000 is in the water and sewer funds. Other than that, I don't know, Mary, if you were going to talk about it, but Friday, our interviews for the permanent position of Clerk Treasurer, and I am basically done this week, but I will come back to help the new person hired for that position.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for all the work you've done. I know, I appreciate it and council appreciates it. My report, yes, we are conducting interviews on Friday. We have several applicants. We have two council members that are going to be participating in the interviews. Scott, the other department heads, a couple of community members, and JW Foster, Mayor of Yelm, will be helping with the interviews. And the interview panel will produce a rank list for me to consider. So I'm looking forward to moving on and filling this, you know, Scott's done a great job, but it's going to be nice to fill this position permanently and start getting back to doing the good work that we do. Be that.
No report.
Thank you. Solid Waste Advisory Board, we heard from them. Steady.
Our next meeting is this Friday. We're going to have the new person who's representing PSC be there as a guest speaker and let us know what they're doing to serve the South Thurston County communities. And we're going to also have Impact Washington, give an update on what they're doing to serve our rural businesses as well.
Thank you, George. TCOM 911, Tenino School Board, Rachel.
Nothing for tonight, but they'll have a meeting before our next council. So hopefully I'll have.
TRPC, that's Cutter. He's out tonight. TPB, Transportation Policy Board.
Seven o'clock in the morning.
All right. Enjoy it. That brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please step forward and do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. Okay. That brings us to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements for the good of the order? Ma, John?
Nope, not tonight.
What? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. That brings us to adjournment.
Non-debatable motion.
Good night.
Good night.